This conference will now be recorded.
2024 to order. And.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Noack?
Here.
Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Rise for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second. Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noack?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Modifications. We have a few modifications tonight, so I'm going to walk us through these and we'll do them one at a time. So the first one, we're going to remove from new business, a special license application. Because we didn't need to approve that. So that will be my motion.
Second. You were close.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noack?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
We're going to move, that's under new business, the Gardens at Alpena will be, will be moved to presentation, so it will become A under presentations. And that will be my motion.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noack?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Next, under the consent agenda, we're going to move bills to be allowed, and that will be under new business D.
14D, ma'am?
Yes.
Second.
Mayor Proton Noack?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
I just, I have a question. Why are we moving the reappointment of Claire? Oh, okay. So we will move, under consent agenda, we will be moving, I didn't have that one, which is currently now D. It was E, council reappointment of Clerk Costalik to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term. That will become new business E. Is that your motion, Cindy?
Yes.
Second.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Noack?
Aye.
Okay, I think we have them all. That's all. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from regular session of August 5th. Any corrections? additions? No? Okay, it will stand as printed. And now we're down to five public comments. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and online comments will be accepted, accepted after in-person comments are completed. All comments should be directed to the council, not to the audience. So if anyone would like to speak to us? Any online? Nope. So we have no public hearing, so we're down to consent agenda. Let me get this right. So A is the budget amendment request to increase expense in the equipment fund in the amount of $23,600 and reduce the fund balance for an emergency repair to the fire engine. B, approve the amended form L-4029 2024 tax rate request to include the dial ride mileage that was passed by voters on August 6, 2024, and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign the form. C, approve the request for an annual delegation of school plan review and inspection authority to a local enforcement enforcing agency for all Saints of Alpena, and authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the form. And that ends consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noack?
Aye.
And Mayor Walchek?
Aye.
Okay, we're to eight presentations, and we have Alpena. Could you do the announcement? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll just give you your card, Mr. Wanda.
Thank you.
What are you talking about? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Storn, and I'll be the spokesperson for our development tonight. We're going to have, just to give you an idea of what we're doing, is that we have four partners that are involved with it. Jim Boris is our financial director, and each one, we have all our own different disciplines. John, behind me, Marusic is the architect, Steve Williamson is the operator and manager, and mine is in the construction and development portion of it. So you get four, four different groups that are in this, in this partnership, in the development partnership. We have a two-minute video of the project, and then we have a PowerPoint that'll take probably another five to six, seven minutes, unless you have a lot of questions. And that's really, and the last thing is, before John pops on, is that this is our fourth of one of these assisted living memory care projects. So we're not new at it, we've been working at it discipline-wise forever, you know, I've been in the business too long anyways, but specifically for assisted living, we've been working on it for about seven years on these different four projects. And we've been working with Mike on your land probably for the last three to four years. We've been testing until we get our financing set. But anyways, we'll turn it over to John on the video.
Good evening, John Marusic, architect. And we're, we're open up with a video, but this is coming down the street. This is the memory care and assisted living project. It's a one-story, 60 units of assisted living, 60, or excuse me, 30 units of assisted living and 60 units of memory care. It's a little, little jumpy here, but we'll have this available for you. And then what we're approaching is a 68-unit independent living, which is 55 and up for seniors. And this particular senior living facility will have multiple many venues. You'll have in-house food service plus hair salon, recreation, all of the, you know, physical therapy, rehabilitation. And in the rear, the very popular outdoor recreation, in this case, you see pickleball courts. So, you know, we, we call it a land-based cruise ship for seniors, basically, because once you're there, you have everything. Okay? And so it's a, it's a, it's a great, let's say, destination for seniors because of the added value. You know, there will be medical facilities onsite where doctors come in, you know, if you have a podiatrist and such. But nonetheless, the point of view is that it's a, it's a very large facility. The independent living essentially feeds the assisted living. We try to look at it as a community-based proposal, because generally speaking, if people are in the independent living, they grow into a community association with each other, and if there's a need for additional services such as assisted living and memory care, they stay within the same complex, same community, and they grow. So it's, it's a, it's a continuum of independent senior living care. I think the road is Hemlock. The road, I missed it for a moment here, that's why, we're coming down Hemlock. So in any event, that's just a, the general review that will make this available to everybody so they can have a deeper look at it. And Bob, why don't you come back up?
We'll have PowerPoint in a second. Just to give you an idea, you probably understand what we're looking for, and that is purchasing the two five-acre lots, and we would end up being just price of a dollar, and then we would end up building the road, another 500 feet of underground utilities as part of the cost of the property. And this is what we're requesting right now from you, and.
I'm trying.
That's fine. But to give you an idea, as we start going through, we don't, we can skip some of it as we go along. I explained who the partners were and what their disciplines here. Well, there you can get an idea of what John was talking about. And the project itself is in and out of about $50 million. So it's a further investment that we're, we like to come in and bring into your, into your community. As a sidebar, your Second Street Bridge down here, my dad built it. And he, he and my mom moved up here before I was born, 37 to 39, and that's when they, they built the bridge, and they were very proud of it. So that's just a sidebar.
His name's on the plaque.
Yeah.
You can check it out.
Most of our financial information and the information, as we go through, is on a TIF. That was all put together by our partner, Jim Boris, who was unable to make it tonight, but I think he's on, on the link.
Yes, I'm, I'm online.
Okay, you want to take it from there a little bit, go through that?
Sure, sure, happy, happy to do that. So, so again, in a snapshot, we're, we're asking to purchase the two five-acre parcels for $1, with the agreement and understanding that we'll, we'll pay for the extension of the road and utilities about 500 feet. Bob, you're on mute.
That's fine, right, you can stay right there.
Stay right there.
Now, go back one more. Go ahead, Jim, finish.
Yeah, so, so we've included in our PowerPoint credentials for, for our whole team here, including the operator and the construction company. Our, our ask for the TIF is to help make this project financially feasible in a snapshot, basically, without receiving the TIF portion of incentive from the city, the project just does not make a return that's adequate to attract the equity. Again, as Bob had indicated, the total project cost is about just under $48 million. And to help enable the project, give substantial, basically, a return that's adequate to attract the equity to build the project, the TIF helps to make that happen. What we've got is a, yeah, total project cost of $47.7 million. We're asking for a $9.6 million TIF, and the way it would work would be a maximum of a 20-year term, and we're proposing an 85-15 split, wherein the, the city would retain 15% of the taxes that we pay each six months, and then return the 85% to us. We're looking for a 20-year term, and we've had prior discussions that in the event that we were to refinance and have no need for the TIF, then that would extinguish it. However, we are long-term holders, and we expect to hold it for the full term. And if at any point we were to sell the property, the TIF would stay in place, because the new buyers, of course, would have to get financing to acquire the property. I don't know if there's any specific questions that the, the board might have about the, they ask?
Well, let's just kind of continue rolling through the PowerPoint. Most of it is stuff that we already talked about, which is credentials. John's been in business for over 40 years. I've been in business for over 40 years. My background has been construction and development, and I've done probably about $4 billion worth of materials, construction. And, and our, our managing group has been actually in the operations of assisted living and memory care for about 25 years, so with different organizations. So credential-wise, along with Jim, has been in the financing business for about 25 years too. So it's a good team together. We worked it out. We went and got a national company to do the, the assisted living, excuse me, the marketing and feasibility study, and they came back with a very strong market analysis for this area, and which has really helped us with respect to their lenders. We've done our phase one, phase, phase one environmental is done. We've done borings out there as much as we can with, because it's fairly wooded, or is it heavily wooded? What are the two? And so we feel very comfortable with our, our numbers. We feel very comfortable with, with the people here that we've dealt with in, in Alpena. Mike Mahler has been unbelievably helpful moving us along through the process, and he's, he's a good, good head for the city. You should make him a mascot. But other than that, I think we've pretty well explained everything that we're doing and what we're looking for. And we're very pleased that, and looking forward to working with the people here and the engineer. We met with the engineer, the city engineer on the site once or twice, just to make sure that we were looking at it properly. And we've, again, we feel very comfortable, and we're looking forward to working with you people.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
When are we going to build it? Well, fast as we can buy the property. Now, we, our intention is to obviously purchase a property and then end up working out the financing. At the same time, John will be finalizing the drawings. So we put up a schedule, a conservative schedule, but our intention probably would be starting in, in the spring. But we literally have to do all that six months' worth of work prior to getting contractors involved. And obviously, we're going to use nothing but all local subcontractors here in the area, which makes it better yet. And I was amiss not saying, but we have, we're going to employ about 100 people. So that'll add, and they're full-time, so three shifts around the clock type situation. So I think we'd be a good partner with the city. That's the right thing.
One of my questions was whether you're going to hire local subcontractors, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
The market analysis that was done, for how many years was that anticipated to, to be sustainable? Was it at least for the 20-year duration of the TIF?
Oh, yes, yes.
Far, far beyond that, yeah. The market study we had completed was done by JLL Valuation. They're a national firm that's been doing this for about 20 years. And, and I'll just read some of the highlights of the market study. So after we build this specific project, there will still be a pent-up need for over 1,025 independent living apartments beyond what we're building. Regarding assisted living, after we're built, there's still a need, a pent-up need for 421 assisted living beds. And for memory care, there's a need for 68 beds beyond what we're building. So this will make a little dent in the pent-up need. But yes, this, this project will be feasible far beyond 20 years. It'll be, be here for longer than we're around, probably, quite frankly.
Maybe you'll start a trend. Maybe you'll track that.
That's right.
Well, the, the beauty of building this though, too, is that the residents of Alpena, they, they, you know, that wish to be here and, or want to, to move here, they're going to free up the housing stock so new families can move to Alpena. So it's really a synergy for the whole community. It's going to continue to make more jobs as more people move in. And as Bob had indicated, we'll be providing approximately 100 jobs, full and part-time jobs, because we're open 24/7, 365. So holidays and all, we're, we're always there for, for the residents.
Carol, you had a question?
I did. I'm wondering how you arrived at the 85-15 split?
It's the numbers. Basically, my background, again, I'm Jim Boris. I've been in the real estate finance and development industry longer than Bob thinks. I've been there for 35 years, but I've financed over a billion in properties of this sort nationwide. And so what we do is we analyze the, the market data to see, you know, what, what the rents are that we can charge. We look at the cost of construction, and we, we just run the numbers and back into what is it going to take to support the project. And basically, the 9.6 million, the, the math is that's 20% of the total project cost. And with a 20-year term, that 85-15 split is what supports the project to make it feasible. If I did anything less than that split, then, then the numbers don't support a sufficient return to the investors to make it financially feasible. So that was a very good question.
So, and I have a question. So you have four assisted living, these four of them, correct?
Sorry?
You've done four assisted?
Yes.
In Michigan, or are they in Michigan?
Michigan. This will be the fourth one.
Okay, this will be the fourth.
And also myself, Jim Boris, I've actually built, owned, and operated three assisted living and memory care, but I've also financed literally dozens of them for clients nationwide. I currently have a, a big project in central Wisconsin that I'm building. It's actually about twice the size of this project. It's going to cost $110 million, and it's 213 apartments. So that's sort of the, the scale of some of the things that we're working on.
Now you know why we brought them in as a partner.
Send PowerPoint to us so we can read all the fine details.
Sure.
We canceled.
Yeah, we will do that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have more questions?
I think the only question I had was, how are the rents in these apartments comparable to the rents in the area, especially for seniors?
Rents? It's a very good question. Yeah, so the market study does a, an analysis of all of the comps in the market, and these rents are already being achieved with adjustments for time and age of the existing inventory. Of course, many of the existing inventory is pretty old and tired, but yes, they did an analysis, and the rents are fully supported by that market study.
And are these market-grade rent?
Yes.
Market-grade. This is a license, this is a licensed facilities, licensed for home for the agent, which is different than a lot of different other products that are out there.
And so the assisted living and memory care will provide activities of daily living. When a new resident moves in, we'll do a health assessment of the resident to determine, you know, what assistance they need. We want to keep them as fully independent as possible. Of course, anybody that moves into the independent living, they'll be very active. Most of them will still drive, they can still cook for themselves, but they will be offered two meals a day. The assisted living and memory care residents, again, we want to keep them super active. We've got an activities director, we've got a nursing department, and we do fun activities throughout the week, but again, provide assistance so somebody could move in where they just need, you know, housekeeping and, you know, laundry done and, you know, lawn maintenance, et cetera. But as they age in place, you know, we'll provide medication reminders, and even assistance with dressing and bathing and toileting, et cetera. So that's really the, the full gamut from just very independent folks moving in to people can age in place and stay till end of life.
The, when you had stated before that it anticipated to employ roughly 100 people, was that for the purposes of running the garden?
Yes.
I didn't know if that was related to the building of it.
No, 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 no. You'll have much more involvement with that over and above the employees of the group.
Yep.
This sounds exciting. I hope that we can make this all work, and we'll continue to.
Wonderful.
And when we get to the point where we can sign paperwork, we'll bring it back.
I know we have submitted not only a letter of interest, but also a form, purchase agreement form that was submitted already, so that's up for, up for analysis.
Yeah, and there's also a copy in the PowerPoint, so when you have time to read through it slowly, when you click on each of the slides, if you double-click on the PDF files, they will actually open. So for example, the purchase contract might be five or six pages. So as you go through, you'll be able to review all, all of the things that we've talked about in great detail.
Mayor, one of the next steps that we would have is to work with them and Mike, Target Alpena, on what the TIF could be, what, and, and our consultant, Matt McClellan, would be assisting with, you know, how that could work. And so even after, beyond the purchase agreement, we would need to bring back some type of development agreement for your approval.
Thank you. And from my understanding, that meeting's set up.
We have our first meeting on Wednesday, our first, third of this conversation, we get on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I just want to say that there, we're going to leave the flash drive, and, but there's much more architectural drawing work on it, so you get to see more in-depth the size of the units, layouts inside each of the facilities. We just didn't have much time. We'd be here all afternoon, I'll show those other people. But nonetheless, I just want you to say that that's in there. Please, you can email questions all, anytime. We're quite, quite open on everything, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. We're down to announcements, and the deadline to file is a write-in for the mayor or council member seat is Friday, October 25, 2024. Really? Thank you. The one, one page? Report of officers, I'll give them. I can't remember which end. Do we start here? This is Rachel Hassel, presentation.
What is goose management?
Oh, the, okay, yeah. So we have A, 2024 Canada Goose Management with City Attorney Rachel Smith. What did I say?
Don't put that on her map.
I answered a lot.
Okay, it's not even on my paper.
Good evening. Throughout the year, it is common to see Canada geese in and around the parks in various other areas in the city. These geese thrive in urban areas in large part because of the landscapes brought about by human development. Their presence in some locations may result in conflicts with some area residents and recreational uses. It is common for city staff to receive complaints about goose droppings in certain areas, especially during the summer months, and excessive droppings may lead to health problems for humans and animals. While it is not our intent to eliminate the Canada goose population, it is important to manage the population to limit issues and conflicts within the city. When determining goose management methods for an area, we must consider things including size of the area and feasibility of chosen methods. Although harassment techniques... and exclusion techniques may be used in select areas, these techniques must be implemented consistently to be successful and are not always feasible given conditions and limited resources. According to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, when attempting to manage a large area, general hunting is one of the recommendations for management. Over the past eight years, goose hunts have taken place in the city during the regular state of Michigan goose hunting season, at the fairgrounds adjacent to the wildlife sanctuary, and at Michigewas Beach as part of the effort to control the goose population in and around the city. Last year, the hunt removed a total of 118 geese. As another control measure, the city's Department of Public Works is permitted through the USDA AFAS Wildlife Services Program to oil Canada goose eggs within the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary each spring. This method involves oiling the eggs with a vegetable-based oil, which prevents the geese from re-nesting. In April of this year, the DPW oiled 106 eggs from 17 different nests. In response to citizen concerns surrounding the annual goose hunt, a goose management committee was formed in 2022, consisting of city staff, a representative from the Wildlife Sanctuary Board, two council members, and one community member in order to explore various management techniques. The GMC continues to evaluate the various control methods, limited or listed above for feasibility of implementation, cost benefit, and likelihood of success, along with identification of problem areas within the city. The GMC recognizes that documentation of data related to the goose population and management efforts needs improvement, and therefore has focused its efforts on continued data collection and documentation. So we've made this a priority over the last couple of years. And I've also included a summary of the data, and it should be in your package, and also a fact sheet on preventing, managing, or excuse me, preventing and managing water fowl damage for your reference. As fall approaches, the local goose population estimated at 227 per a recent survey, and this is just a one-day windshield survey that takes place within, you know, a short period of time to try and capture all the areas. I think we get most of them, but there are a lot of them hiding in nooks and crannies around the city. So the GMC will continue to evaluate and implement various management strategies and document their effectiveness. However, the annual goose hunt is one tool that can be used as part of a multifaceted approach to goose management in the city of Alpena and should be considered each year by council. And this will be part of an overall management strategy. Although these hunts would occur during the regular goose season for the state of Michigan, any hunting within the city must be approved by city council. Thank you for your consideration, and I've put a motion there for your consideration.
Questions for?
I have a question, just because, you know, I'm new to the council, and I wasn't here for the last vote. Who gets to shoot the geese within the city?
So Don Gilmett arranges the goose hunt, and he has some trusted hunters, and it's some city staff, different members from the community, but they're people that we trust to hunt within the city. Yeah. And I don't know, Don, if you had anything to add to that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, new computer. I didn't know if it worked or not. Yeah, so it's pretty much been the same individuals year after year after year, going back because Carol's newer on council, and so is Erin, and even Danny. The original hunt, they just opened it up. Thad Taylor set up years ago, and they just hunted all over in the sanctuary, and there was like 19 or 20 blinds that were set up. And then guys would do like a lottery system at the police station and show up and hunt. The problem is that, you know, that type of hunting back then, we had issues with, you know, when people would swing their barrels to shoot at a goose flying by, for an example, the shot was going out in the street. They took longer shots, which resulted in a lot of geese winding up being crippled and, you know, Canada geese are very hard to kill. They, you know, you can hit them. They can fly a long ways. So by using the same people, they know the rules. We try to limit the range of our shots so that we're ethically dispatching the geese and not just wounding a bunch of geese. We have somebody on the river that also, if we think we wounded, when they're out there in a boat, and they, and, you know, typical years, there'll be four or five that get hit, but they make it to the river, and then the person in the boat, usually a city police officer, is able to grab the geese for us. So we don't have geese in people's yards or anything else.
Yep. Thanks, Don. Yeah. So basically, we're trying to keep it as controlled as possible.
And the sites for the goose hunt this year will be?
So this year, we are only doing the sanctuary, or the fairgrounds, excuse me, for Don, as we're taking Michigewas out of it this year, I believe, because we have the beach restoration going on, and there's just not an area there that lends well to the goose hunt. Yep.
entertain a motion, and then we can discuss.
I'll approve the 2024 goose hunt dates of September 5, 12, and 19 of 2024.
Discussion?
No, ma'am, well, as a senior of the council and one of the first ones to implement the recent hunt that we brought back years ago, I would say I speak in favor of it because prior to that, I was subject to a lot of complaints. And I'm glad that we've expanded the different approaches to management. We've tried even before the hunt to manage the geese and the issues that we're having all over the city with many methods. And those that we're doing now in combination with the help have greatly reduced, you know, the complaints that we're receiving, you know, just the droppings that are left behind and so on. But at the same time, you know, as Don had said, and our manager has said as well, too, we're not looking to eliminate the population. We're just trying to mitigate the issues and lower the population to management level. So I would speak in favor of this. We've been doing it for years. We've had no issues. It is, like I said, it's during the hunting season. And so I think it does a great job in helping us control the population. So.
I was sitting there looking at the numbers here between today's, this year's windshield census and last year's, and the oilings and other things we have done, even the harassment methods like this, we still have more this year than we had last year. Last year was around 169, and this year's 227. So I look forward to the date that the numbers drop down and stay down, and they'll be pretty good that way. But sometimes management has to go on this way.
Perfect segue to what I'd like to say about this, and that for several years, we've been working on mitigation. And yet, the numbers of geese increase. And we've done this, and I remember the last vote was, let's do a wait-and-see. And my suggestion is to, instead of a goose hunt, try these other forms of mitigation: decoy, treble our efforts on oiling to prevent nesting, capture and relocate, and use scaring devices. If our numbers are rising despite the fact of the hunt, it speaks to me of inefficacy for reducing our goose population. I stand on that.
And I'm just, I'm just going to add to that. We're going to, next year, try to get to the other side of the river, which we didn't get to this year, so that will help next year in collections, we hope. I think that Shannon's team did a really good job on collecting the eggs that they collected this year. I do have to say over the last couple of years, because I do sit on this committee, that we've come a long way. And the things that we're doing, the things that we're trying, collecting the data that we never had before, the data will, year after year, from this point forward, continue to tell us where we are. I do have to say that even though it says that we have 227 geese, and as a snapshot, I do know in certain areas that the geese seem a little heavier than they were last year. Johnson Street's one of them. But I still walk the bike paths a lot, and I don't have an issue with the goose droppings because they're not everywhere. They're just where the geese are coming up, going to the other side, and then going back. So it's, and it doesn't stop me from walking on the bypass. It's just, it's not like you're walking in an inch thick of goose poo everywhere. So everyone knows my opinion on this, and I'm not against hunting. I am against hunting in the city because it is goose season. There are other ways to hunt the geese. You can go 200 feet off the shore and hunt geese. So there are other ways during the season to get them. So what we're approving as council, we're approving the discharge of a firearm in the city when we approve. But I will not vote for this. And do you have any?
Well, I mean, just based on the information that's been provided, if there's a decent area, much better to the deer population, you instigate hunting. And something that I understand there's been other things that have been done. And I like that. They're just trying to live, too. I get it. And I, but, you know, if this committee was formed in 2022, and supporting a global goal of reducing the population in connection with the decoys, the cracker shells, the dogs repellents, things that Carol spoke to, you know, it's something that can be addressed next year, I guess, for a vote if the population continues to rise. But I don't think that can really be garnered with just an every year assessment. So I think that that's, that's why I'm supporting, that's why I voted or pushed for the motion, because I support continuing to see if these efforts do make an impact on that population, which has clearly been an issue because it's been presented to this council. So, and then having Mr. Gilmett provide his explanation of who we're giving the guns to, which is why I asked the question. You know, I'm thinking, you know, are we just going to get random people off the street saying, I want to permit? It's comforting to know because it is a discharge of a firearm within the city limits. So people have done it. I'm comfortable with it. And I'm also, it's qualms any concerns I have with where the hunt is to occur, because I know, being told where it is this year, being out in Michigewas, that would be very concerning to me, because there's people, there's a lot more people, I think, who populate that area for recreation than where the hunt is.
And this would be down towards the end, the more natural end. And then the bypass is shut down around where the hunts are. So I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, I mean, just collectively, I mean, that's my long-winded answer.
Well, and I do want to say that, you know, we are going to continue on the, you know, just the multifaceted approach to this. And, you know, Cindy knows how I feel about this. I think it's all part of an overall strategy. But I've always said to her, if we get down, you know, below, well, I don't know, it's hard to set a threshold, but if we get our numbers lowered, then using these other methods, then let's look at not having the hunt. I don't believe that we're there yet, but it's really difficult with goose populations, I think, because they fluctuate so much because of different environmental factors. So, you know, it's hard to tell from this data. I don't think that we have enough data yet to really be able to make good decisions on this. So we'll continue to focus on that data. We have tried some of these other methods, vegetative barriers. We're trying to leave some shorelines, you know, less landscape, basically, you know, because if you have more green lawn, that attracts them. Now, as far as control with dogs and different harassment techniques, that can be really labor-intensive. So we have to balance that out with what staff is able to do. So, you know, that's kind of, you know, what we look at, Carol, with, and what we discuss all the time at the GMC meetings. You know, there are things that you can apply to the lawn, but there's not a whole lot known about some of those products, but some of those do work in specific areas. So I'll stop rambling now and let you all decide.
I'd like to add, sometimes our, our goal is to keep them out of certain areas like Marina. And we try things down there. And the spinners work, as Kevin told us that, except somebody stole it. It's like, you can't win.
The Goosebuster machine that set off basically an alarm that sounds like, you know, geese, distressed geese, the lines were cut when we put it down at the Marina because it was annoying, basically.
Some of the things that we do are effective to keep them out of where we don't want them. It's except that the public sometimes isn't helpful, because the spinners cost about, what, $25? About $25 apiece? And when somebody walks off with one, it's like, you know, then we don't have it. And we don't keep, we don't have enough, big of a budget to 25, 25, 25, 25. Did talk about starting a program where people could buy a spinner, and we could have them in places where we're trying to keep the geese out, and they are effective. So.
Yep.
There are things that we can continue to do with our goose population. Anna?
So on Friday, I went to Austin Brothers, and that field behind is ridiculous amount of geese back there. And as a parent, I would be concerned about kids, I don't know if they use that while they're attending the center there, but there's got to be a lot.
Those are the soccer fields. So, yeah, when we were back there, when I used to have kids in soccer, it was, there was always goose poop.
And we had talked about that, too, that specific field, because for some reason this year, the geese, there's more in that area than there normally is. Maybe the parents would like to know about the spinners to keep the geese out of, off the field. So go to the field and shoot them.
Which is why I'd just like to add that, yeah, they're going to places that we don't like, and we don't want them. So hunting within that area is not going to be very effective, short-term or long-term. But other methods that we have, fine. I mean, I've grown up with hunting, and I don't have any problem when I hear the deer shot out in the woods and stuff like that. But I happened to witness, just because I grew up on 12th some of the hunt, and it's not very nice to watch. And it's, this is a kind of animal that is monogamous as well. So I just am all in favor, at least in the city, of avoiding a gun hunt.
Anyway, so if there's nothing else, Anna can take the floor.
Councilmember Kane?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noat?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchak?
Nay.
Mayor Johnson?
Thank you.
Okay, now we're to B, and this is council committee reports. I don't know what to
do. Don't remember. I'm, well, last meeting, we talked about the MML, the Michigan Municipal League, and Danny's going to be our representative, and I'm going to be the alternate. Just wanted to say that I, that I signed up. I submitted my application. It sounds amazing because we're looking at things like community excellence, thriving communities. We're going to also look at cities from a national perspective, which is not a glance we get very often in our secluded neck of the world. So I'm looking forward to that. We're also doing with the Maritime Advisory Board a Viking cruise, which sounds like it's going to be amazing, seeing Lake Huron from a completely different perspective.
Just, I just have a question for you, and I don't know if Rachel spoke to you or not, but I know you're on the committee for Little Red on that committee, and you need, you've gotten permission to make that happen back there. They want to know when that's going to happen. To this date, it's really about funding, 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 and getting people on board, because there were so many parties involved. Because it would be, without getting into too much detail, it would be. If you die, because it would be, without getting into too much detail, it would be more feasible to do it now.
Now, exactly. We do have some money and we need to sandblast it and paint it and replace the light. Those are some issues that have come up. But the whole idea is to do it now while we can still preserve it on its little island. Because that's falling apart, so we have to shore it up and get some specific materials.
And you have the easement so that people can access it.
So people could actually go and see Little Red.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mike, do you have anything?
No ma'am, I have nothing to report this time.
Okay, and I'll be brief. For recycling, we've, we've done a new schedule for picking up bins. The sites are much cleaner, material is not on the ground. We are doing our very best to be the very best neighbors we can. Our truck is here, it is ready to go on the road. I put the decal on it the other day, so when it goes on the road. And we just have to modify some more of the bins because the way they sit on the truck, we had to put another channel on the bottom. That's coming quickly, so that'll be out there. Outside of that, that's about it.
Speaking of recycling, those cardboard bins are very popular.
Oh, yes.
Very full. But I did find out that there's this big long hole on the end of the thing like this that you can shove it like this. Works at least a little bit.
And we're also having a cleanup date on the 24th, a short, a real short timeframe, 9:00 to 10:30.
Is that by Great Lakes?
Oh gosh, I was looking, trying to find the email and I'm not having any luck.
I think it's the one by Great Lakes. We're always out there. I was out there this weekend cleaning up, so.
Picking up around the bins?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. If you're at the ice arena, they look really nice right now and they will continue to look nice.
When are the bins emptied? Because after this baby shower, I have a lot of cardboard.
And there's two ways to do that. So if you have a lot of cardboard and you put it in your car, you can just take it out to the recycling facility and they'll unload it and take it.
Oh, but I mean, when are the bins emptied though?
So the bins, and it depends on, so it depends on where they are, how many they have.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's at Northern Lights Arena.
At Northern Lights, the bins at Northern Lights, there's bins at Northern Lights that are emptied every day. By the weekend, you'll have at least, we have three bin binners. So there's metal, plastics, paper and cardboard. There'll be at least three that are empty and the two cardboard and the metal one. We have one big one that's metal and plastic. Those ones will be empty, they fill up quickly. So by Monday, we're back to emptying them again. But throughout the week, there are bins at Northern Lights that are empty. Every day, there's bins being pulled from that site.
And Madam Mayor, there's no time limit on when you can go to those bins? Or is not it the Northern Lights one?
No, they happen all the time.
I had a question asked of me, says, are those bins for commercial activities as well as private?
This is just residential, residential recycling. We don't operate under the part of the law that, that commercial businesses can use the bins, except we do sell them a permit so that they can. So if you are a business and you want to buy one of the permits, go out to the recycling facility or give them a call, purchase a permit and you can use the bins.
Well, I had a meeting at NIMCOG last week, so it's like, that's one of the first ones, things that were put out is, you know about Habitat Humanity and all the work they do in the area? And they're having their annual dinner at the JJ's Restaurant on the 19th of September, it's like this. Yes, it is a fundraiser as well. Single tickets are $40, but they do have cash raffles. And I think that Ted Fiennes is funding it personally, unless he thinks that, but I'll tell him he can do that. But it's, it's a, it's a good thing to go to and help support the Habitat Humanity. We're, we're hoping very shortly to have the three places built out on Bedford Street. So that's looking forward there. One of the presentations that was at the NIMCOG was from Chris Wheeling of NIMCOG concerning drone projects and services. And what this was is be providing equipment and flyers to help with statewide site readiness program to help promote commercial sites and availability for future economic developments. It's like this, where that information gets on a, on the state website like this. And so anyone who's looking to, to bring about businesses into the areas like this that say, hey, that's a good place. Oh, that's a, a good price or likes this for what we need, it's like this. So that's what will help out there. And it's going to be something that is going to be provided, in other words, NIMCOG is going to be buying the, the proper type of drone and they will have the flyer. So they will not only have the drone, but they'll be able to send out the flyer with it, it's like this, so do all that kind of stuff. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Nothing to report?
Thank you.
Let's not do anything.
Okay. We have no communications, no unfinished business, new business. So A is zoning board of appeals alternate, Montiel Birmingham, our planning, development and zoning director. Hi, Montiel.
Hi, thank you. So the City of Elpina zoning board of appeals is currently down to four members. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires a minimum of five. Our current bylaws require seven members. The city has been actively advertising for ZBA members through the website, social media and word of mouth. We've advertised at least for the last year to year and a half. We did recruit just one member recently. He had his first meeting a month ago, which is great. While ZBA meetings are typically infrequent and only called when an application has been made, the low member count puts in jeopardy the ability to make decisions on cases if members are unavailable due to unforeseen circumstances, conflicts of interest, et cetera. The Zoning Enabling Act states that one regular alternate member of a zoning board of appeals may be a member of the legislative body. Such a member shall not serve as chairperson of the zoning board of appeals. And the legislative body may appoint to the ZBA not more than two alternate members for the same term as regular members. And then it goes into some more specific detail as far as when they can be at a meeting and if they're an alternate member. Due to our current member count, I would like to request that council consider appointing one council member as a regular or minimally an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. I included a copy of the section from the Zoning Enabling Act. One, a regular member would be allowed to be and act like a regular member. An alternate member would only be able to be on, be in a meeting if a regular member was unable to attend. So that, those are the two main differences of being a regular versus an alternate.
And you had asked about this before and I said if I was, if no one else wanted to do this, I would. But Carol had sent an email saying that she was interested. So I'm, well, it's up to Carol.
Volunteer.
I would rather do the regular member, but gives you.
True, I agree.
So if.
Does that mean I'll be an alternate or a regular member of the community?
A regular, if you're willing to do so, that would be.
I'm willing.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to make Carol a regular member of the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
I made that motion, I guess. I'm good.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Do I recuse myself here? Well, then aye.
If you don't want you.
All right.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Montiel.
Mrs. Mayor, that was a motion to Carol. Did we need to do something with the two members as alternates to allow that or they currently?
No, because only one person from council can, you either have to be an alternate or a regular member, correct?
Yeah.
Just.
But they, you, you can have alternate members right now, that is currently.
Can't come.
You can, okay.
Can they come from here?
I think, no, only one, so, okay, all right, there you go. I just want to be clear.
That was my understanding.
Yep.
Thank you. Now, under new business, we're down to the 2024 City Hall window replacement bid. And Shannon Lewinsky is going to help us.
In March 2026, twenty, or in March 26, 2024, I can talk today. The city opened and received bids for the replacement of windows at City Hall. As part of the project specification, potential contractors were requested to consider the historical aspects of the building as part of their overall proposal submittal. Invitations were sent to 18 firms with two proposals received as follows. Additionally, Clark Construction and Tim Construction, both of Elpina declined a bid. After the bids were open, Todd Britton of Meridian Contracting informed the city that his supplier provided him with a revised quote for upgrading the windows. Exterior color to dark bronze was more than he anticipated and would add another $51,903 to his proposal. In accordance with our purchasing policy, we did reach out to Murphy Builders about why their price was significantly less than Meridian. They indicated that their price, that they had priced their replacement to match the existing industrial windows similar to what we have now. We requested and negotiated with Murphy Builders to explore other options available for window replacement, which would be better representative of the historical windows in the building in the past. After meeting with Murphy about different options and vendors, Murphy again provided the city with a modified proposal, which better suited the overall intent of the project using Windsor Windows. Attached is an information about past projects in Michigan that utilized the same windows in their project. The city will be using similar windows to the ones shown in the case study, except the city's windows will have a bronze exterior finish. Additionally, the interior of the windows will be wood, which closely, closely matches the trim that exists. Murphy Builders has not contracted with the city previously. Pursuant to this, city staff from engineering and building department met with several staff members of Murphy Builders. We discussed their ability to complete the commercial job of the size and with consistency and workmanship demanded of a historical, historical building such as City Hall. They assured staff of their ability and attention to detail. They also provided the attached order of operations as well as a selection of projects with historical importance. Following our meeting, staff discussed and is comfortable with recommending Dave Murphy Builders. We believe that they will complete the city project to the city's satisfaction. A quite, adequate funding has been established in the budget utilizing ARPA funds as well as funds from the Edward Griglak Trust to make several historical accurate upgrades, such as the window grills, window interiors and bronze exteriors. My motions are there as, the motion that I have is as follows. Move to award the 2024 Elpina City Hall Window Replacement Project to Dave Murphy Builders LLC of Elpina, Michigan for the modified proposal amount of $219,492.67. Members of Murphy is also here tonight in the audience that can assist or answer questions if you have any.
And I do have some questions. Does anyone have questions? Is Shannon?
Yeah.
We have a few questions. Yep. Here, thank you.
Your name?
Absolutely. My name's David Murphy. My father is the owner of Dave Murphy Builders. And then this is Nate Matthews, he works for us.
I'm the project manager of this job if we do get it.
Okay, so the projects in this packet that you gave for Murphy, these are buildings like the Hertzville Train Depot, these are buildings that you have worked on?
Correct, yep.
So, and I'm just going to tell you this, I'm kind of protective of this particular building.
Absolutely.
And we've had someone that's done a lot of work on this building and was the person that put in the bid. And I'm really comfortable with the work that they do on this building because of its historic nature.
Absolutely.
And I don't want to see anything happen to it. So when you install the windows, you'll have to use a caulk. What type would you use?
With this, we'd use a SolarSeal OSI Quad Cauk, 20-year color mash to the window.
Okay, but is it a rubber or is it an oil base?
Polyurethane.
Yes, poly, polyurethane base, yes.
So in, in an old building, you have to, in this, an old building like this, you have to use a rubber caulk so that the oils and the other caucks don't seep into the bedrock, the bed, the bedstone. Because it's limestone and it's porous. And if it does that, then around each window will be a dark rim that we will never get rid of.
We absolutely don't want that.
No, we don't. So it's those sorts of things that's kind of concern me personally. I'm only one person on this board, but I want this project done right.
Absolutely.
I just do. And I know that staff has met with you. And I don't know anything about you or, or your business or, you know, what you do. But this building means a lot to me. I don't want to leave it in a state that can never be fixed.
Absolutely.
At least I have spoken my piece and if anyone else has anything to say or ask, you can.
What's the appeal of, of this? It says lead time for the, I guess, to get the windows is at least six weeks, if not longer. Would that leave sufficient time this year to be able to do that?
This project probably won't get done this time. Most likely.
If that's the case, we'd have more than enough time in the spring to do it.
Because they have until June 30th to finish it. So if, if the windows don't come and it's too cold to do it.
Could the windows be ordered and stored so we don't have a significant increase in the cost of the windows?
Absolutely.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, obviously I'm thankful for your bid. You know, I've got a reputation up here in council has always been wanting to have more than one. And so I appreciate you coming forward and, and doing that. I have asked, you know, different people who have worked with you around the community, either residential or other projects and stuff like that, your workmanship is very good.
Thank you.
Everything I've heard, so I'm, I'm very comfortable. I think there are some details, I do share the concerns that this is, you know, a very historic building.
Yeah.
We want it done right. And I'm, I'm assuring that you guys will go and do your research if you haven't already to make sure that the project is not only done completely, but, you know, done accurately in the way it should be.
Absolutely.
You know, so, but I, I trust that, I trust our staff, you know, when they meet with people and, and go through that as well. But those are great questions, Mrs. Mayor. So I don't have a problem with awarding this bid to them. I think that, you know, just from the past and from other people who are in the industry and who have, you know, talked to me and approached me about the company as a whole, that the workmanship has been very quality. So I'm comfortable with it and I appreciate your bid.
Thank you very much.
I always like to ask, are, are you employing local workers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got.
It's an Elpina outright.
It's right on 32, so it's just outside of the city. But I think we employ, employ 12 local residents, is it 12? 14, I'm sorry. But yeah, everybody locally based lives right around here. Yep.
I'm your councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry, Noak's sentiments. But my question is, because I, I mean, it's a lower bid. And so naturally I'm attracted to that because I want to, you know, limit the amount of money, taxpayer dollars that are spent on projects if both competitors are equally available and, and competent for the task. But the question that was asked by, by our mayor leads me to think, you know, that is, are there, is there going to be a vetting, a vetting segment, I guess, where things that were just brought up by our mayor are going to be addressed?
Such as the ceiling used around the windows?
Right, I mean, if that hadn't been asked and hadn't been presented and it had been done with the caulk that you had indicated in your initial response, that could have led to an irreparable injury to the building. And that's just but one thing. So is there going to be a process to?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's not going to impact the price, obviously, because we're contracting for the price that's set.
Correct. So it won't change the price at all and there's going to be, it's going to be a step-by-step process as far as ordering the materials, getting the right things here, talking with Chris. Most likely, Don's not on the call anymore, but talking with Don and having him go over it and just making sure that every little detail is right. So it's not going to be a jump, let's get it done as fast as we can, it's going to, let's make. It's going to, let's make, let's make sure that every little thing is correct and then we move forward step by step.
So intricacies such as the one that was, an example that was put forward with the caulk, those will all be addressed, all the i's, a's, t's crossed?
Correct.
Okay.
We would love to address both issues by installing one test window. That Don can be there for the whole process. And if we have the bid, we will definitely go through and check all the materials we're using, that situation you had brought up, which I haven't done the detail on the exact caulking, but we will make sure and do a test window where you guys can inspect it completely inside and out. And I think that would help with everybody seeing how it's being done.
Just a thought, would it be helpful to run that materials list and the plan for the window? It may take a little bit more time by the historic.
A shipful?
Yeah. Yep, or even the historic study committee.
Study group, yeah.
Mission.
I'm on that too, so.
I'd be happy to, when we put it all together, give you that list of materials as well as our procedure for removal, installation, everything like that. And you can go over it with them and see if you have anything that would help us at all.
Okay. I'm okay with that if we run it by the historic.
And then as far as the contract, can we actually write that in to the contract?
Yeah.
Or?
We can do a change order to it immediately to do that. The motion would probably just have to be modified to include that as a change order to the contract.
Okay. And I appreciate you indulging me, but this building means a lot to the.
Oh, I completely understand. It's a magnificent building.
I don't want to leave it any worse than.
No, I'd like to put my name on it and be able to drive by and show my kids that I did it. Definitely want to make sure it's done right and to your guys' satisfaction.
So does anyone have any more questions? No? So if someone wants to make a motion with a change order to add the material list and to have it run by the historic study group?
I can move the Elpina City Hall Replacement Project to Dave Murray Builders LLC and for the modified proposal price of $219,492.67 along with the other modifications that were discussed.
Do you have one? It would be a change order for the material and then to send it to the historic study group for approval. We can meet at any time. We can do a special meeting. Second.
Historic study district.
I think it would be, is it the commission or it would be the district study committee?
We have a couple different.
District study committee?
Yeah.
It would be the study committee, yeah. Commission.
It is the commission, commission overseas.
Elpina Historic District Study Committee?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Sorry, I was just confirming that you were the.
Yes, it was.
Very good eye.
Yes, it was. Aye.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Shannon, once again, for the 2024 snowplow truck replacement.
As part of our ongoing fleet management, a new plow truck was budgeted for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. Fleet manager Doug Rosnowski reached out to our current supplier, D and K Truck Company of Lansing for current pricing. D and K is our state purchasing contractor for Freightliner. Mike Dino, our salesperson from D and K, informed us that this would be the last year of this model of truck that we have been buying. Our initial plan was to purchase four identical or near identical dual axle trucks across four years for ease of fleet management. This would allow for basic wear and tear items to be in stock and prevent long downtimes in the event of a failure of any of these items. With an expected major model change order, we are requesting that council allow for the purchase of the second plow truck this fiscal year. Mike Dino has suggested that next year's increase could be approximately $30,000 due to the model changes that are coming. The attached quote is for the cost of the truck only. Once the vehicle arrives, it will need to be outfitted to make it into a plow truck. Our current outfitter, truck and trailer specialist, another state purchasing contractor, has estimated the outfitting price for at approximately $110,000 per truck and will be able to provide us with an actual quote for the purchase order in October, once the new prices and contracts are available. While adequate funding has been established for the purchase of one plow truck, we are also requesting council approve the attached budget amendment, which would transfer funds from the equipment fund, fund balance to cover the added cost above the budgeted funds for purchase and outfitting of a second vehicle. There's adequate fund balance available to support this additional purchase. Additionally, this budget amendment reallocates the funds from the capital equipment line item to the capital vehicle line item after it was inadvertently budgeted to the incorrect line item in fiscal year 2425. So I have two proposed motions for council to consider. Proposed motion to propose the purchase of a second plow truck for fiscal year 2425 and a motion to approve budget amendment to transfer $185,000 from the equipment fund, fund balance to the public works capital vehicle for the purchase and outfitting of the second plow truck.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of Shannon?
Shannon, you guys have done a fantastic job with this, all the work that you've done over the years to keep everything going. On the purchase of these, these trucks, what is the, you know, expected lifetime that we normally would see out of a truck on a purchase? And I know you were setting up a schedule to get these on a regular basis.
Our hope is to rotate them out every 10 years between equity left in that vehicle and just upgrades and wear and tear on them. We're trying to do a 10-year rotation, rotating the trucks out at that point. It leaves us some gaps in there to take care of some things like street sweepers or water tankers or anything like that. Fire trucks need to get into there. So just things like that, that's our hoped rotation. It would, again, allow us some equity in those vehicles still, hopefully at that time.
All right. Good question. Anything else? Hey, entertain two motions.
Sure.
One at a time.
I move that we approve the purchase of a second plow truck for fiscal year 2425.
Second.
I'm sorry, second?
I was, got quiet.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Will we approve a budget amendment to transfer $185,000 from the equipment fund, fund balance to public works capital? Vehicles purchase and outfitting of the second plow truck.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane? Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, we're down to bills to be allowed. Anna, I just have a question. Do you just want me to read the entire amount of, or do you want me to do your breakdown?
I guess for informational purposes, you can do the breakdown.
Do you want me to read the paragraph, the whole paragraph? For the modification to the agenda, blah, blah, blah. A modification to the agenda will need to be made, and this will be my motion. This evening, payment was made last week to WEX so that it could be paid on time in the amount of $16,687.30. It was due on the 15th, and I made the payment via form and paid from the bank account. And Anna did this, I didn't. Due to a miscommunication error, it did not get added to the list of payments before the packet ran out on Friday. Also, it was discovered that the mortgage payment to Nicolay Bank for the DDA needed to be made in the amount of $1,317.81. The initial bill totaled on our consent agenda was $1,080,577.30 plus the $16,687.30 plus the $1,317.81 equals, this is the amount we're going to approve, So I move that we approve the bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,098,582.41 and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soid to sign the warrant.
A second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
And E, under new business, that we took off the consent agenda was to, a council reappointment of Claire Pastolak to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term expiring on August 1st, 2027. And we pulled that because her name was misspelled. Claire should have an E on the end and it was missing. So my motion is to make that, to make that, put the E on the end of her name.
Yes, ma'am.
A second. Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Name is Claire.
Mrs. Mayor, I move that we adjourn to closed session to discuss an update on pursuant litigation.
A second. Mayor Proton Noak?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
What a lot's going on tonight. If they're signing now, you might be done by Thursday.
And my tea is running out of my mouth.
Oh, thanks.
I have some.
A lot of dialogue.
Yeah.
It's good, I know. I'm not complaining, I just, I looked at it, I was like, oh. And because my alibi was all going crazy.
Everything is dry.
Oh, they, they have, I knew.
I have very good tea, but I have a lot of stuff getting more mint.
Actually, heck.
Oh.
Getting this close, I'm sure that someone says, April 4th, 2020.
Oh, is really, okay.
Something like this, so I'm sure that they pop up every once in a while, or they will.
Same with mine.
I don't know.
Do that in a little kind of comment.
This conference will now be recorded.
Action, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
I said second.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay.
We were waiting.
I have just a question or two, we're still reviewing.